The full three minutes. Come up in any order. We have Bill Tall and, just Bill Tall, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you very much. I'm glad to be here. My name is Bill Tall, Island City Farmers Nursery. It's been a bit since I've come in, but I've talked to you before. Just had a very, very busy schedule in the spring and all that. And I'm back again, just to let you know that we have some schools that have been contacting us, and they're getting more gardening material and stuff in. I just want to thank you so much for allowing all these little things that are happening at schools that make it worthwhile for kids to enjoy things like this. I know that some schools borrow an incubator from us, and they hatch chicks. And then either find homes, or we get the chicks and the incubator back. And so, and you see a lot of them with gardens, and a lot of their food is now going into the cafeterias. I just want to thank you all for supporting this effort, because, as you know, health of kids and all that, and health of parents, have a lot to do with this. And what the kids learn, they a lot of times disseminate back home to their parents and all. And I have a lot of customers that come in the nursery now, and more and more, that the kids are learning something, they want to try it with them, because the parents have never done it. So, thank you so much for all the support that you give, for all the schools, and all their gardening programs, and all that has to do with food. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And this completes non-agenda public testimony. Thank you for your comment. And, thank you. It helps us to better serve students. And at this time, could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. So, thank you, and I'd like to welcome all to the July 7, 2015 Regular Board Meeting, with all board members present, and to those that are watching the broadcast. If you wish to speak on one of our items, and you have not already filled out a blue form, please do so at either one of the exits, and present it to our Board Officer, Cheryl Ward. And also, just to remind you, Bylaw 1025 on public testimony, you're limited to a maximum of 20 minutes, 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint. I don't think that we'll have any problems tonight with going over any limits. Non-agenda testimony was heard at 5:03, with all board members present. And I would like to ask at this moment to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Please vote. And moving right along, moving slow to go fast. E1.
I move through item E1.
Second on item E1.
Okay. Superintendent Martin.
Thank you, President Foster. I'll invite Susan Parks to come up to speak to this item specifically. It's a name change to the revision, to change the name of the charter of High Tech High, sorry, Explorer Elementary, to High Tech High Elementary. And Ms. Parks can give us some background, and I see.
Good evening. Thank you. Explorer Elementary is requesting to revise its charter to become High Tech Elementary Explorer.
Oh, Susan.
Sure.
Staff member, you can come sit up here as a staff member, from Charter Schools Office. Thank you, trustee advisor.
So, Explorer Elementary is one of the existing charter schools in the High Tech High organization. It's requesting to revise its charter to formally change its name to High Tech Elementary Explorer, so that it aligns more closely with the other names of the schools. Documentation from the school have been provided, and the change is requested to be effective this fiscal year. And I believe there are representatives from the organization who are here to speak to any questions.
I don't have any questions. Are there any questions? Do we have, we don't have public comments, so we've had a motion, second, can we vote? All right. That passes unanimously. Moving right along to E2.
E2 is a public hearing and action item for the Learning Choice Academy. It's a non-classroom-based public charter school that serves grades K through 12. The public hearing is to listen to support for the request to submit a general waiver request to the State Board of Education. Non-classroom-based programs for charter schools, every few years, are required to request a funding determination for the state. The February deadline was missed by the school, and the school is requesting through San Diego Unified its authorizer to submit a general waiver for the state.
Second.
Point of clarification, do, right, that was the question. So, do we need to go back to E1 and do the same, or is that just for two, just for E2? Okay, so, let me open the hearing. And can I have the motion again?
Second.
Okay. And if there are no questions, then can we please vote? Okay, that passes unanimously. E3.
Thank you. E3 is also an action item. This is a template agreement for charter schools and the district to memorialize their relationship with respect to oversight charges, their special education status, their CalPads reporting status, and some other services such as insurance and STIRS reporting. The idea is for the template to be reviewed, and hopefully adopted today, and then individualized versions will come to the Board for approval annually.
I'll move item E3.
And I'll just add, thank you, Ms. Parks, about your comments about this. This template's developed jointly with all the departments, Finance Division, Legal, Charter Schools Office, and staff has, I just wanted to inform the Board, staff has been looking at the services, how much it costs to provide the services, how much we receive, and we would be preparing a report for the future, to talk about what fees we're charging, and if there's any recommendations from staff. That's not tonight, we're not proposing any significant changes tonight, any changes tonight. Ms. Parks has been engaged with the charter community, so they're aware. But we, even though we're not proposing significant changes tonight, it is time to have a conversation, and we'll be bringing forward further information over the next year, nothing overnight, nothing big, but we would like staff, I have asked staff to look at some of the proposed changes, and to make sure that what we're charging is in alignment with how much it's costing us.
So, at this point, we're just approving the template?
Yes.
Any further questions? No? Okay, please vote. That passes unanimously. On to E4, Holly Drive Leadership Academy.
Thank you. This is a ratification of the special education agreement relationship between one of our charter schools, which operates as a school of the district for special ed. So, it's to, it goes back a year, and runs the term of the five-year charter, and it reflects the school's responsibilities and the district's responsibilities.
I'll move item E4.
We, if there's no other questions, please vote. That passes unanimously. On to E5.
And I'm inviting Mr. Delgaroff to switch places with Ms. Parks, to talk about this item. This is a Charter School Facility Project Recommendations. And our Charter Schools Facility Committee is comprised, as you know, of charter leaders, and something our district has put in place. The charter school leaders, with the Charter Schools Facility Committee, review the proposals and the associated budgets during their publicly noticed meetings. And Mr. Delgaroff is a staff member that has been leading this committee, and the recommendations coming forward tonight for the Charter Schools Facilities Use Funds.
Okay. Item E5 is an action item, to approve 11 charter school facilities projects. As you're aware, Prop Z allocated a pro-rata share of funding for charter schools, and the Board has previously approved 16 projects totaling $64.7 million, including the feasibility studies for eight of these projects under consideration in this item. Item E5 contains eight charter school facilities renovation, construction, and three feasibility study site master plans. And the total budget for these projects is $188 million. The projects include at Gompers Prep, removal of portables and design of, and construction of permanent classroom buildings to replace the portables, gymnasium and other related site improvements, health sciences, high and middle college, that'd be the acquisition of new site, design and construction of classrooms, offices and support facilities. At Ifton Charter, design and construction of classrooms, science labs, administration, kindergarten facilities, and removal and replacement of all the old buildings at that former Jackson Elementary School site. At King Chavez Primary Arts and Athletics Academies, design and construction, modernization of the King Chavez Campus, it's formerly King Elementary School, removal of portable classrooms, construction of new buildings, multipurpose building, food service facilities, sports fields, and other related site improvements. For Museum School, acquisition of a new site, design and construction of classrooms and offices to support facilities. The Price School, it would be the acquisition and installation of a relocatable building for use as a fabrication lab. And this is contingent upon entering into a long-term lease or use agreement with the University of California, San Diego. San Diego Cooperative, design and construction of new classroom, science labs, administrative spaces, kindergarten facilities, and reconfiguration of vehicle access and student drop-off. And this is at the Linda Vista Annex, former Linda Vista Annex site. There's two projects for Global Vision Academy, one for the elementary school, the other for the middle school at the elementary school, which is co-located at Adams Elementary, be the removing and replacing the portable classrooms with new two-story classroom buildings at the Adams campus. And it would, it would work in conjunction with the modernization and renovation of the Adams campus tied together, so that the two schools are, can enjoy co-location better, and better serve their students. On the middle school campus, which is at a leased church facility across the street, it would, it would be renovation and construction of classrooms and office space. And this is obviously contingent upon entering into a long-term lease agreement, successful ground lease agreement, in order to succeed with that project. A Royal Paseo Charter, this is a, just a feasibility study, the first phase of work that they're located over at Wilson Middle School. And this would be to look at the feasibility study of relocating, acquiring land and relocating that school, and providing adequate classroom space for the students. With High Tech High International, this is another feasibility study, master planning for the, to relocate from the campus that's located at Liberty Station currently. Innovations Academy, similar situation. This is a feasibility study to look at relocating and acquiring property and facilities for that campus. These charter school proposals, they come to us, they're initially reviewed by district staff, and the Charter School Facilities Committee conducts open discretion, as Superintendent Martin mentioned. And, and these have all been approved by the Charter School Facilities Committee. On February 4, 2014, the Board adopted a policy requiring staff to provide input, as well as comment on the spending recommendations from the Charter School Facilities Committee prior to Board action, and you have that there in this item. And staff has reviewed the, these projects in accordance with the policies that the Board adopted on February 4, 2014. Staff is recommending approval of these 11 charter school projects.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. If there are, is there any?
Would you have any comment on this speaker?
Oh, right. Of course. We have four speakers, Scott Barton, Miles Durfee, Phil Beaumont, Tim Wolf. You can come up in any order, you'll have the full three minutes to speak.
Miles Durfee from the California Charter Schools Association. I am also a member of the Charter Schools Facilities Committee, but tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the California Charter Schools Association, not for the committee. I just want to take this moment to encourage you to support these projects. I'm looking forward to seeing your vote, and a 5-0 vote, hopefully, because getting to this point is a pretty celebratory moment for students in, throughout the district. And to see this happen is something that I know when Prop Z was, during the election, when times might have looked a little tough, you know, it was pretty exciting to think that the district and the charter school community could come together and do what was right for all kids. So, I just wanted to mark that by getting up and thanking the Board, and the vision that the Board and the Superintendent had to carry this from that point to here. And I look forward to also mentioning to you that, you know, this is one step, and it's a very important step. It's a huge step to help a number of charter schools, 11 on this list, but there are 50 charter schools, and of course, there are lots of facility needs, just like you have. And I am continuing, you know, and CCSA will continue to work in all aspects of facilities, because charter school students typically see facilities as a burden statewide, one that's not reasonable and rational for a lot of students in charter schools. So, I encourage you to vote for this, and thank you for all the work that you're doing on this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Tim Wolf, CEO of King Chavez Neighborhood of Schools, Board President, Board Members and Staff, and Superintendent. I would just want to thank you in advance for the approval from the committee recommendations for the Prop Z funding allocation for the building and remodeling of the King Chavez Arts Athletics and Primary Academies, which sit on the district facility that was former, the former King Elementary. 11 years ago, we agreed under a district RFP to partner to facilitate an improvement in the King School. Along the way, with the assistance of the district, the King Chavez Neighborhood of Schools was able to keep our promise to the community, the parents, and to the district, for schools of distinction, where kids from the inner city can have an education as good as those in our wealthiest suburbs. What we also found along the way was a community of parents who were eager to help with the mission of excellence. That mission from King Chavez is excellence in arts, athletics, and academics, from a foundation of love. We found excellent leaders. We found teachers who were dedicated enough to buy homes in our neighborhood. We also found people like Chunky Sanchez, a musician who's helping us and our children. He was, sang and toured along with Cesar Chavez. We found a mayor who marched formerly with the Freedom Fighters and Martin Luther King Jr. We found the son of the world heavyweight boxing champion Archie Moore, Billy Moore, who helps our kids under ABC Boxing with martial arts and other martial arts assistants, and a host of other organizations, and parents who, with a wealth of attention for our children. We're also fortunate to have a Board who had the political fortitude to include charters in the planning and of proposition and passing of the bond Prop Z. Thank you for not forgetting the children of Logan Heights. The school stands as the center in the community of excellence, and with your help from Prop Z, we will continue that excellence with a facility that is first class. We welcome you to visit our schools at any time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Phil Beaumont, the Director of the Museum School, Board President, and Board Members and Staff. Thank you very much for having us here tonight, in this very collaborative process that's been occurring for the past couple of years on Prop Z. And just a moment, may I thank you, Tom, also, for lending us that incubator for our classroom. We are all very excited here to be here this evening, and urge your support in improving the entire slate of the Charter Schools project proposal. And I'm here perhaps a bit more specifically, and a bit more selfishly, to urge you to support the Museum School in particular. As you know from our recent renewal, the Museum School is finishing up our 17th year of bringing a combination of traditional, project-based, and arts programming to kids from all over San Diego. We have a strong demand for our school, and we have great community partnerships, wonderful family support, and a longstanding collaborative relationship with the San Diego Unified and district staff. While providing our kids with a wide breadth of subjects, from the common core, to computer programming, to sewing and cooking, we've demonstrated that we can teach the whole child and still achieve high test results. All of this, we've been able to do in a site that had initially, for us, been set as a temporary one. We love our location in walking distance to Balboa Park, and the many museums whose exhibitions and resources we use to enrich our curriculum. Our site, though, built in 1961, falls short in many regards in supporting the work that we do with our students, with an aging infrastructure that comes with ADA issues, constant need for repairs, and inadequate space for our kids. Our classes range from just 435 square feet to the biggest one of 847 square feet, which is much lower than a standard classroom size. And indeed, our school's building only has 9,302 square feet, those two square feet are important, which amounts to about 40 square feet per kid. And we don't have any dedicated gathering or exhibition space, and our onsite playground is just over 2,300 square feet. So, indeed, when I was putting these numbers together in presenting our application, I was impressed in what we've been able to accomplish on our, on our small site. It's a testament to our flexible staff and families. So, our goal is a very simple one. We aim to create a museum within the Museum School. And all we need to do that is a building that can provide us with adequate classroom space, some workshop labs for fabrication, rehearsal space, art and science labs, an exhibition and performance space that could be dedicated to providing our kids a place to where they can do presentations that don't have a temporary feel, as it occurs now, when we're borrowing space to do some of our presentations. And the ability to provide access to the community. We do seek to have a school that can be used throughout the year, even when we're not in session, to be able to provide classes that are occurring for other schools. I will, I will stop there. I urge you to vote yes on all this, and again, thank you very much for the collaborative effort that's been put forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Barton from the Price School, UCSD. Superintendent Martin, Board President, and Board Members, thank you guys for supporting Proposition Z in this whole charter thing. It's a, selfishly also, the Price School is looking for a fabrication lab, a safe place for our students to use power tools and build the STEM-related activities. We have, we're part of the first robotics program, and first is a way that we're getting kids in throughout the world, 19 different countries, involved in science, technology, engineering, and math. And we, we were the first robotics team in San Diego, and now there are more than 30 teams. And I can't, we can't claim responsibility for all of those, but I think a lot of the outreach our school has done, and so we hope to continue that. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you folks, so I hope you support all of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, Board Members, are there any questions or comments? Yes?
Okay. First of all, the King Chavez, where is the location of that? Is that next to the Memorial campus? Is that right?
No, this is, this is actually on the former King Elementary School site, yeah.
Oh, I'm trying to remember where it's part of the memorial.
There is a, there is a, one of their campuses is located at, at the memorial site, but that's not.
But that's not on this project?
That's right.
Okay. And, because there was going to be a bigger project, that whole campus. And the other question had to do with, which school was it? I lost it. Okay, I don't see it right now. I have a general question, which is to do with, last year, you said there was 64 million, and this year, 188 million, approximately, of charter school projects. And the reason I'm asking this is that there are, people are talking about, there's $350 million in the bonds set aside for charter schools. And if I do my math right, that's 252 million between what we did before and what we're doing now. So, which is finally, these projects are great. I just want to ask, is, it sounds like it's, when we have these bond measures going out 10 or 15 years or more, is it, is the charter part being more front-loaded at the beginning? As opposed to being proportionate, the same, I'm not saying it should be, but as opposed to being proportionate along the same amount with the district schools?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question, because what we're doing is we're taking a, we have, you know, there's obviously the pro-rata allocation of total bond funds, which is 350 million, of the 2.8 billion that's allocated for Proposition Z. But during each bond issuance, we're taking a pro-rata allocation of each bond issuance, and allocating it to execute or expend on charter school projects. What we're asking you to approve here is a, an overall budget, project scope and budget, but we're going to need to meter out the actual allocation and assignment of these projects to multiple bond issuances over time, in order to, so that, so that, because the, let's just say, the pro-rata allocation of the last issuance was somewhere around $66 million out of the 530 million that was issued. So, we will see about a $60 million pro-rata allocation in the next bond issuance, potentially, that we're planning for October. So, so really, the amount of money that's totally available, if we, say we issue, you know, roughly 500 million in bonds in, in October, or 450 million, and we're looking at, say, maybe, and there's maybe 100, 120 million total. So, we'll be allocating these projects over time. But what this does is it gets us, we can start the design and planning process, and we can start looking at how these, all these projects fit into a master's schedule. And that's going to be the next tough question, is, and I think the committee is meeting next week, and that's one of the items on the agenda, to talk about the, the timing of all these projects, because obviously, they can't all go first. And, but we think that we can execute multiple projects at a time, but it will, they will be executed over time. There may be some land acquisition, and there may be some design, and there may be some construction, all at the same time, on various projects.
And so, it's basically the same as with the district schools, where we have a big master's schedule, but they're being allocated as the, as the money comes in from.
Exactly.
Because I just, because I just want people to realize that with 200, this would be 252 million approved of the 350 million.
That's correct.
So, we're, you know, over two-thirds of the way in terms of having approved charter school projects. And I'm just hoping that the committee has taken that into consideration, when they're looking at all the proposals that already, two-thirds of the money will have been designated.
There was a considerable amount of discussion between, and debate between committee members about the big picture, because they're very well aware of that. And there, there were committee members that did want to look at, you know, and said, and leave enough money for future projects to come along, but realizing that there was also a terrific need. And I think the discussion sort of balanced that out, and this, and their recommendation, and then staff looked at it as well. And, and so, there is, you know, enough, probably, there's always going to be a need, probably a need that outweighs, even with, like district schools, and the need will always outweigh the, the budget. But in this case, I think they did a good job of sort of balancing all the priorities. And they did look at all the applications that were submitted across the, the group of local charter schools and the local charter school needs. So, but, but you're right, I mean, that, that is, you know, as the Charter School Committee continues to do its work, they will continue to allocate the remainder of that 350 million.
And then one other question, on San Diego Cooperative, which is at the Emerson Bandini Campus, correct?
This, that is, that's San Diego Cooperative 2. The Cooperative that's, that's addressed in this agenda item is the, located at Linda Vista Annex, I believe it's on the corner of Genesee and Linda Vista Road.
Okay. Then that takes care of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Any further questions or comments? Okay. Can we please vote? That passes unanimously. There are no other non-agenda public comments at the end, in that case, meeting adjourned. Oh, to close session.